Testing, testing, one, two, check one.
Good afternoon, good evening, friends. The Board of Education for the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District is returning to the dais after our closed session meeting this afternoon. We have nothing to report out of closed session. That brings us now to our open session. And let the record show that all members are present. Member Leon Vasquez has stepped off the dais, but she is here and did participate in the closed session. And tonight, if I could ask our PTA Council President Jen Smith, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Happy birthday.
Thank you very much. That'll now bring us to the approval of the agenda. I've had a request made from multiple members of the board that we consider moving forward our general public comments this evening. I'm open to that if the board doesn't object to it coming after the superintendent's report. So if there's no objection, the board has reached consensus that we'll take public comments after the superintendent's report this evening. That now brings us to the approval of the minutes, minutes for February 15. Is there a motion? Thank you, Oscar. Moved by Oscar, seconded by Ralph. And if there are no amendments or corrections, then... Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you. So are there any questions or comments about the February 15th? And then, yes, there is. Oscar, we have a question for you because you recused yourself from a particular item. And would you please tell us why you recused yourself? Forgive me, but you stepped off the dais and I was supposed to have asked you February 15. And I should have alerted you that I was going to ask this in this moment, but if you could share with, for the record, please.
Yeah, great. So the recusal was the law firm, Orbach, I forgot the full name of the law firm, had made a donation to the youth center that I work at. So that was the, I mean, that money doesn't go to me, it goes to the youth programming, but to be on the side of full transparency, that was the recusal, the recusal was for that reason.
Thank you, Oscar. Thank you very much. All those in favor of approving our minutes from February 15th, will you say aye? Aye? I'm going to read that as six yeses, six ayes, and one member not on the board. I mean, not here. We did, we did. No, that's because we didn't do it, Sarah. Sarah just said, "Did you approve the agenda?" No, the board president just said, "We're going to do the agenda that way." We need an approval of the agenda, please, as amended, to move public comments after the superintendent's report. Thank you, Craig. Moved by Craig, seconded by Ralph. All in favor, signify by saying aye. And that's six to zero. Thank you, Sarah. So now, that brings us to, excuse me, our commendations and recognitions for the evening. Dr. Drati were at Women's History Month. And Susan is here, I think, right?
Yeah, Dr. Powell will do the honor.
Welcome, Dr. Powell.
Good evening. Good evening, board members, Superintendent Drati, Cabinet, and our community. I'm here this evening as a proxy for Dr. Irene Gonzalez Castillo, who truly wanted to be here tonight. She is doing great work at the Avid Conference and couldn't come back up, but sincerely regrets that she cannot be here for this one in particular. As most are likely aware, March is Women's History Month. Tonight, we are highlighting an excellent example of celebrating women's history. The exciting component is that who we are honoring tonight doesn't do this just for the month of March, but rather integrates the contributions of women within our visual and performing arts programs. In August, our Sam Ojai marching band launched their season theme, "Empower." The students in our marching band rehearsed daily and performed at multiple weekend competitions to continuously refine their performance. Our Viking marching band earned a place at the Southern California School Band and Orchestra Association Division Field Championships. The Sam Ojai marching band is under the direction of Mr. Kevin McKeon, who also happens to be a Santa Monica Malibu alum and parent. This quote is from Irene. "As both a district director and a parent, I'm so proud of our band's accomplishments and feel so fortunate to have Mr. Kevin McKeon at the helm. I'm proud professionally because of the work our stellar staff continues to do to empower and assist students in excelling in many avenues. As a parent, emotionally, I am proud because I see what these contributions have done for my daughter and will do for my son and our family. She really wishes she could have been here tonight." Mr. McKeon is here tonight to share just a little background selection of their theme and share the students' performances with the board. So at this point, I would like to introduce you to Mr. Kevin McKeon.
Thank you. That was a beautiful speech. Irene's also an amazing band mom, by the way. You should, I want, that should be on the record. As Irene mentioned, I'm so proud to be an alum from this school district. And I'm in year 17 here and just love the fact I've taught almost at every, every level, every, almost every school in this district. So it's wonderful to see something that's so student-driven and student-run, where we get to watch and facilitate the progress. But I can't, I don't want to speak too much because, as we do with our season, our students really are the reasons why we get to get this acknowledgement tonight. So I would like to invite my assistant drone major, Isabella Chuecos, to speak a little bit about this season.
Hi, I'm Isabella. I'm a junior at Santa Monica High. This is Michelle Felix, they're sophomores, and Natalie, who's a junior. And this marching band show meant a lot to us personally because, as Santa Monicans, we do try to force this agenda of women's rights. And so, as also people who love marching band and want marching man, the marching arts to be represented more, combining these two things really helped in, like, in elevating our band's sphere of influence in the world of marching bands. So personally, for me, as a female conductor, it was really nice for me to be able to have this show as my first year conducting because it just, as a woman, as a woman in power, I would like to be able to use the most important year of my marching band career so far with a show like this. And finally, I'd like to say that in this year of, in this month, of women's history, I think that it would be really excellent if we got more programs at our school to be able to incorporate women's rights in their activities. Thank you.
And we have a short clip, I think, we're going to share with you at this moment. So thank you, Sarah. And thank you again.
But today, women make up about half our workforce, but they still make 77 cents per dollar manor's. That is wrong.
Oh, great. The link to the full video will be in our Friday packets. Mr. McKeon, thank you so much. To the students, thank you so much for being here. Thank you. Thank you so much. And now that'll take us to our next commendation, recommendation, excuse me, recognition, and that's with the ballroom dance program. Dr. Mora.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Cabinet, and community. It is with great honor that I introduce Ms. Judith Douglas, Chairwoman of the Santa Monica College Dance Department, and she will be coming forward to introduce the presentation this evening. Please come forward.
Welcome, Professor Douglas.
Thank you so much, and we hope we're commended as well. I'd like to introduce as well Mr. Bill Bush, who is one of our faculty, one of our instructors. And I am just so proud, I've been at Santa Monica College for 43 years. I've been teaching dance, I'm chair of the dance department, and this is the third time that we've had a contract with the Unified School District to be teaching dance and specifically to be teaching ballroom dance. And I'm a little biased, and I'll say it, and I can tell you that we're not only teaching dance steps, we're teaching, as you can see in the picture here, we're teaching etiquette, we're teaching all kinds of manners, self-respect, we're boasting their self-confidence, and a lot of things. We're teaching five styles of ballroom dance to the entire fifth grade students of the Santa Monica Unified School District. It is a 10-week program. They get class twice a week for 50 minutes. They're not only learning the steps, we've got them to feel comfortable enough to be in a closed couple ballroom position. They are studying and learning the dance styles, and we're very proud. And it is our hope and goal that we will create a pathway to Santa Monica College to study. They don't have to be a dancer, any kind of a student, and it's a wonderful way for them to understand and see our school and our college. So maybe what I'd like to do is just show a little bit, what we do is we have a 10-week program, and at the 10, at the end of the 10 weeks, we have a culminating event. This particular one was at Edison Elementary School. Each student gets up and, well, each student researches one of the five styles of dance, and then we select students to come up, read a little bit of the research about that particular dance style, its origins, and then the students go ahead and demonstrate it. So why don't we just watch a few minutes of this, and then I'd like you to hear from Mr. Bill. Actually harder than our box. So, and then after that, so this was the culminating event, and it's very exciting. It was a packed house. We do it at each school, and as I said, the kids, they're not just learning dance steps, they're learning cooperation, respect. They're gaining a lot of self-confidence. And in this age of so much technology, it's nice just to be able to look at somebody in the eye and relate. So that's a little bit of what we do, so I wanted to thank you all for your support and introduce you to Mr. Bill.
Hi, thank you, Judith. Thank you. I remember that very well. That was a wonderful evening, and I love how Edison puts it all together with an evening performance, inviting all the parents to watch the accomplishments of their children. This is my third year teaching students in the Santa Monica Malibu School District, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate it as a parent, your commitment to the arts and to this program in particular. I think, especially in this day and age of the hashtag #MeToo, that to start young men and women, young boys and girls, working together in close quarters, in dance position, learning how to work together, teamwork, respect, honor for each other, to me, there could be no more important program than to start this at such an early age. Beyond that, of course, it's to watch them go from, well, to put it another way, I don't think there's any fifth grader that has one of the items in their bucket list, learn how to ballroom dance with a girl. And to watch them move from that place of, "Ooh, no, we have to touch," to, "This is my partner, let's do the best that we can do, and how can we make each other, you know, look better on the dance floor," and do five different dances over the course of 10 weeks. It's really an incredible accomplishment, and again, I thank the board and all the support that you've given to this program.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add one more thing. Besides the five basic ballroom dance styles, we're also giving them a little bit global perspective, so they're learning a Hawaiian dance, a Mexican dance, and an African dance as well. So we're very proud of our students and just wanted to thank you all for your support. Thanks.
Thank you so much. I just want to thank Dr. Mora and Dr. Drati and all the members of the board, and just, this is actually, one of the things we love, right? It's, I think, Dr. Mora just said, "It's awesome." It's a celebratory thing, and so we commend you and the partnership with Santa Monica College and the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District and this opportunity for our fifth graders. So thank you very much. That now brings us, friends, to our communications, and I think Patrick, I saw Patrick is here. Welcome, Patrick. And we'll start with the report from Santa Monica High School.
Okay. Hello, everyone. So this has been an exciting weekend for Sam Ojai. So the play opened last weekend, "How to Succeed in Business Without Really Trying," was super exciting. It opened last week, their first show was on Friday night, and then it's playing again this weekend, so if you haven't gotten tickets, it's not too late. Open house for Sam Ojai was on Tuesday, so the parents got to come and then see in each department, like, what was going well and what they were working on, and it was really exciting for a lot of the parents. This Friday, so tomorrow, is the teacher versus student basketball game fundraiser for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. So we're selling tickets, students are really excited, teachers are pumped, the competition is getting kind of intense. And then our last pep rally for the year is on March 22nd. So then, at this point in time, ASB is working on showing, showcasing our seniors before they leave for college or wherever they plan to go. And then, this was super great. JV and Varsity Cheer won first place in the USA Nationals competition at the Anaheim Convention last weekend. So, good for them, like, that was like a huge achievement, number one in the nation for both JV and Varsity. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you. Patrick, I hope you can stay this evening. We have a resolution, I think, that you might want to be a part of the conversation. And you're welcome to take your seat at the dais with us. You're studying for your AP exam, I've just been told, so I, thank you very much, Sarah, and thank you for being here, Patrick. Although, if you need to go home and study, we understand. Thank you. So I don't see our, okay, so we are without our representative from Malibu or from Olympic High School this evening, so that'll bring us to Sarah Braff. Welcome, Ms. Braff.
Okay, I'm going to try that again. Good evening. I would like to thank our new administrative team, all of them as a whole, for doing a lot of listening over the last six months or so, one month or so, three months or so, depending on who you ask. And I think that's a very important thing to do, and we don't do enough listening. We do a lot of talking sometimes, but then we don't always do enough listening, active listening. And one of the things that I recognize have been heard is the need to improve communication. Now, we've been asking for the need to improve communication for many, many years, but I have seen this team take it on. And I am seeing improvements in the way communication is happening throughout the district, and I think it's helping us to be more focused in our teaching and learning. So I want to say thank you for that. Also, we've had some very exciting visits to both Santa Barbara for Tech High School and to see the CART program, which is a research and technology program, in Fresno. I must say, the van was very crowded and tight, but we had the best driver ever. Dr. Drati is an excellent driver, and very thankfully, he was gracious enough to drive us all, so we didn't have to. So I want to thank everybody for all of that, and that's all I have to say for today.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you very much. And Carol's not with us this evening, and so that'll bring us to the PTA Council report. Welcome, Jen Smith. And thank you for leading us in the pledge. I didn't even tell you ahead of time.
A little surprise. So there's a lot going on, I know you all know that. I wanted to tell you that the PTA, the State of California PTA, has taken some steps about the gun violence. They've added to their adopted positions, and I wanted just to say that the PTA supports state and federal legislation and restrictions that protect children from youth and gun violence, and would, it would include requiring minimum three-day waiting period, background checks, state-certified courses in appropriate firearms use and safety handling practices, restrict gun internet sales, including kits to modify guns, enforce requirements for gun, state and federal gun requirements for purchases, require safety devices, prohibit sale and possession of assault weapons, prohibit sale or resale of accessories and ammunition designed for assault weapons, ban manufacture, sale, or possession of junk guns. It also, and there's quite a bit more I'm going to skip over, but they believe that we must enact, we believe that we must enact legislation that will reduce gun violence. It further supports education programs that stress the importance of firearm safety and awareness, education programs to inform parents and community members about the harm and injury gun violence inflicts on children and youth, public awareness campaigns regarding the importance of legislation for safety and protection of the public, especially children and youth. And so I tell you that because at our next council meeting in Malibu on Tuesday, we will have a local leader, Susan Verge, from the Brady Ask Campaign, to present to council. It's a campaign of gun safety awareness, tools for parents of young children to talk about, to give guidance about how to talk, have card conversations about where their children are playing and if there are guns in the house, and how, and basically, safety about how guns should be stored. In regards to the planned walkouts on March 14th, I would really like to say that PTA is very appreciative of our administrators and board in supporting our kids to take part in these demonstrations in productive ways. The California State PTAs are organizing a call-out on March 14th, instead of a walkout, to our federal legislators to demand action to end gun violence. So the next thing I want to tell you about is our district-wide parenting nights. March 13th, Jennifer Johnson-Jones going to present five psychological shifts to raise exceptional children. And we've actually added another, our Will Rogers PTA President, Zakiya, has incorporated her PTA meeting and asked if we would like to open that up to all, to invite all schools and have PTA Council behind it as a district-wide meeting in behavioral health and wellness. It's going to be led by Shuley Lowton, along with the City of Santa Monica Youth and Families Unit, the Family Services of Santa Monica, Providence-St. John's, the Claire Foundation, and Dr. Chris Mariero-Hollison is a clinical psychologist, and Crest will also be there. So we will round out the year with three district-wide council, three district-wide parent education programs this year. Last PTA Council meeting, we had Carolyn Coster from the Facilities Department come and present, and the Coming Group present about the work that they're going to be doing about a sustainability plan. So council is going to provide two parents to work on the steering committee and participate in the process for a sustainability plan for our district. On Tuesday, I sat with parents who are advocating and organizing for healthier food in our schools. As a component to closing the achievement gap, providing scratch meals in well-equipped kitchens with trained staff is the goal. I know the board is supportive, and it's very apparent that it needs financial commitments behind it to make it happen. So I'm hoping that this is something the board starts working on when they are starting their budget planning and approaching food as, putting food in there as one of the main priorities. Summer Adventure is gearing up. Registration opens March 19th for the five-week Summer Adventure Program in the middle school and elementary school. And I also wanted to let you know that the council has extended an open invitation and will be creating a new liaison's position for the Special Education Parent Resource Network that's now forming. Two wonderful, dynamic parents, Cassandra and Pyle, are working closely with Pam Kazee to expand parent involvement and create inclusion environments. As council, we are working to understand how we can facilitate better parent communication and support systems. Sometimes our limited systems, like classroom rosters, create unintended separations. A simple example is if a child spends time in more than one classroom but is only on the class roster, there's an extra step of putting them on a second classroom list to be included in communications about class activities, parent participation, or special events. They're just sometimes missed. So we're having parents express things that can make special education children's communication between parents and classroom better. I would also just like to say, my son was in marching band, and his experience with Mr. McKeon and the presentation that they put this year was spectacular, and I was so proud to be a representative from Santa Monica Malibu School District. They also came in sixth out of 30 bands, so it was pretty impressive. That's my report.
Thank you, Jen Smith. Thank you very much. That now brings us to our superintendent's report. Dr. Drati.
Thank you. I'll try to keep it short today, but I'll speak to, I'll speak to two, I'll speak about two points regarding the tragic incident that happened in Florida regarding the school shooting that occurred there. Obviously, that's been in the news and in our families' minds, and I wanted to kind of just express something that, add on to something that Jen Smith already talked about in terms of that March 14th national walkout that students are wanting to exhibit throughout the nation. So we, in our district, do recognize that students have rights.
be included in communications about class activities, parent participation, or special events. They're just sometimes missed. So, we're having parents express things that can make special education children's communication between parents and classroom better. I would also just like to say, my son was in marching band and his experience with Mr. McEwen and the presentation that they put this year was spectacular. And I was so proud to be a representative from Santa Monica Malibu School District. They also came in sixth out of 30 bands, so it was pretty impressive. That's my report.
Thank you, Jen Smith. Thank you very much. That now brings us to our superintendent's report. Dr. Drotty.
Thank you. I'll try to keep it short today. But I'll speak to, I'll speak to two, I'll speak about two points regarding the tragic incident that happened in Florida regarding the school shooting that occurred there. And obviously, that's been in the news and in our families' minds. And I wanted to kind of just express something that, add on to something that Jen Smith already talked about in terms of that March 14th National Walkout that students are wanting to exhibit throughout the nation. So, we in our district do recognize that students have rights, and we respect that they have rights for expression and also freedom of speech. So, in that sense, we will, as a district, honor that. I've been working closely with the principals, who are working with their students to, that are planning a demonstration of some sorts. Obviously, there's different levels. You have elementary students, junior high and high school, that those may look different. And, but our principals are there not to, or our staff is not there to protestize, we're there to respect the fact that students do have rights. And I've received several emails of concern that somehow the district staff is taking a position, and I want to let the committee know that is not the case. We respect those that may not view what's happening, and we'll make sure they also are able to express their concerns or things like that. So, we're watching for both set of beliefs on each side. But I don't want anybody out there thinking because we're out watching for the safety of our students that we're somehow endorsing it or taking a side in the argument. So, I kind of wanted to let you everybody know that. Now, the idea is that it's supposed to be nationally, it's supposed to be 17 minutes. We think it's gonna be 17 minutes, but it may look different, I don't know. We'll be ready if there's something more than that. We are working closely with the authorities to assist us. And in the case that there's a march somewhere outside of, anything outside, we'll be there to support our students in terms of safety. But we're not endorsing the fact that they do something outside of what, out of their bounds. But this is a safety issue, and that's our primary goal here. In terms of people's concerns of safety, I know me and almost superintendent peers or administrators are really wrestling with this whole idea of safety. I know people are heightened, have a heightened sense of insecurity right now with everything that's going on. I want to continue to encourage our families to, if they recognize things, if they feel uneasy about things that they see or hear, or students, you know, we have a call line, they can contact administrators, we encourage that. At the same time, we will respond to what we can respond to. And so, sometimes, the information may come in seeming one way, but it may not be. So, we'll do what we have to do to protect our students, we're within the law. And we work very closely with the authorities to do that. Our principals and staff are constantly evaluating their safety protocols, trying to find ways they can improve. And I know everybody in the nation is talking about that right now. So, there'll be more information coming out about if we see any need for improvement and so on. But we, our hearts go out to the families in Florida, our heart go out to all students. We shouldn't really be having this conversation in education, but we are. And somehow, as a nation, we had to find a way to get out of this state. And for some reason, it's a normalized conversation now, and it shouldn't be. But we gotta work together somehow to get out of this. So, that'll, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Drotty. And, yes, Ralph.
Dr. Drotty, do you know what time of day the walk, the walk gathering is on the 14th? 10?
It's supposed to be 10:00 AM. That is what we're hearing. And we're, the principals are working with, are working with the students to try to see, like I said, we want Mr. Drotty there safe.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Drotty. So, we amended our agenda, and that'll now bring us to public comments. I'll hold the public comments to 30 minutes, so we'll accommodate as many of the public comments that we can in 30 minutes' time. And if there are public comments that exceed that by our rules, we'll take those at the conclusion of our agenda as the continuation of public comments. John? And these are comments on a specific agenda item, correct? Correct, these are general?
Okay, so I'm gonna, we're going, I'm gonna say to the, to the board members, when we were asked about moving the public comments, it was to accommodate children who we believed would be coming to address questions about food services. The cards that we have here now are to speak to one of our major items. And so, what is the will of the board? We should perhaps wait until that major item and hear the item number, John?
It's a major item. I remember.
So, what I'm gonna, what I'm gonna rule here, actually, thank you for, so what we're gonna do, John, is we're gonna hear these two speakers here that have just come in for food. So, we do have two speakers on food services, and then, keeping with the spirit of how we amended our agenda, we'll then hold those other comments until we get to the major action item unless...
Can I, can I recommend something that if we keep it that way, can we just, when we get to those items, the major items, can we move that H up to the front, to be like A instead?
Certainly.
They don't have to wait that long at least?
Certainly.
What should be about, I'm looking at...
It'll be very quick. If we keep going here, we'll be...
Okay, great. So, we can move it up?
Okay. Craig is asking that we have a vote, and that's appropriate. Right. Is everybody in favor of the way that I just described our moving forward with these public comments? There's no objection. Thank you. So, we're gonna hear these three general comments now?
So, we have three general comments. Public comment is a time when members of the audience may address the Board of Education on items not scheduled on the meeting's agenda. As per the Brown Act, board members may not engage in discussion of issues raised during public comments, except to ask clarifying questions, make a brief announcement, make a brief report on his or her own activities, or refer the matter to staff. Public comment shall be limited to 30 minutes. Speakers who have submitted a public speaking card prior to the beginning of this section will have three minutes to speak. Finally, speakers and members of the audience are asked to refrain from expressions of support or disagreement that would intimidate other speakers or disrupt the meeting.
We have three speakers. I will call all three. They are Tricia Roth, Julie Pearl Slater, and Jane Schmitz.
When, you're ready? Yeah. I'm Tricia Roth. I'm a pediatrician. I live in Santa Monica for the last 17 years, but now I am a grandparent at Will Rogers Elementary School. So, I wanted to talk a little about sustainability and the importance of food and health in terms of giving our students the optimal chance for achievement. I've worked on substance abuse for the American Academy of Pediatrics for the last 20 years on environmental issues such as tobacco smoke and the alcohol environments, not only in this community and county, but in seven other counties in, around, in and around Los Angeles. And I'm currently working on a marijuana study group. So, this summer, I went to Washington DC because my daughter's school got a Green Ribbon Award, her elementary school up in Washington State. And I have another daughter here who's the parent of the two kids that are Will Rogers' students. And she's taking a course in sustainability at UCLA, getting a certificate there, so she can't be here tonight. So, that's why I'm here, to offer my services as a pediatrician. And I'm speaking not for the American Academy of Pediatrics, but in terms of identifying that I'm a member in good standing. So, I just wanted to let you know, I appreciate your moving forward in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Roth. Our next speaker is Julie Slater.
Hi, everybody. I'm Julie Pearl Slater. I'm a parent at Will Rogers and a parent of a JAM student. Hello. And I don't come with nearly the credentials that our previous speaker does, but I am a very involved parent. And we've been working for several years in concert with whomever we could work with on really trying to change what's happening on our nutritional platform across the district. From the kid perspective, every child who runs for student council at Will Rogers, when they write their little script to the kid, they're like, "I'm gonna change the cafeteria." So, just by virtue that I've watched this happen for six years, something's wrong. Now, as an edu, I'm a 25-year arts educator, and I've worked in the classroom, and I know what it looks like when you have kids who are either food insecure or who aren't really being fulfilled nutritionally. And we in Santa Monica are so forward and progressive in how we approach so many things that it is a shame that we're not looking at it the same way in how we're supplying food to our kids within the district. So, we have a very motivated group of parents across the district, and we'd love to see what's possible within the next budget cycle about what sort of money we can allocate towards revamping our food program and especially getting our kitchens up and running so that we could make as much fresh food as possible. And all of that speaks to what we're talking about in the district in terms of equity, in terms of closing the achievement gap. I'm sure I am preaching to the converted, but I am saying this now, so it is on public record that we are asking that we really start looking at ways in a very significant force to make a difference now. Thank you.
Ms. Slater, I have a quick question.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for your proclamance, speaking. I attended Will Rogers Elementary School, and I participated in the Free and Reduced Lunch Program. So, I'm very aware of the program. I had a question in regards, you mentioned about the kitchens. Is there, is there anything in particular in terms of what you've seen or the discussions that the parents have had, in terms of what type of infrastructure or change you would like to see in the...
Well, I mean, just from a basic, just looking at, so, on the day that they have grilled cheese, let's say, they're not actually making grilled cheese from scratch. And grilled cheese is a pretty basic, you know, food item. They're essentially warming up a prepackaged in-plastic grilled cheese. There's no reason that we can't have kitchens and ovens that are workable. I mean, it's gonna take staff training, it's gonna have, it's gonna take a whole paradigm shift. But even just the basic need to have a working oven, so it's not a microwave, is at least, you know, the first point of entry. I, I could go on with a list of demands, but I think the biggest piece of it is, we have to look at it as we're looking at all the facilities improvements, and we're looking at all these ways that we're trying to increase sustainability across campus, this is a big part of it. So, that's the best I could say to that right now.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is Ms. Schmitz here?
Good evening. Thanks. I'm Jane Schmitz. I'm a mom of a kindergartner at Franklin. And I'm also a public health researcher with a specialty in nutrition. I am so proud to be a Californian, I'm so proud to be from Santa Monica, because we lead on so many issues. And I feel the momentum that's building towards improving the nutrition program and the healthy from-scratch food program that I think we all want. So, it's exciting to feel this momentum building. And I come here to represent a broad array of parents from a wide range of Santa Monica Malibu schools, from Franklin to Edison and beyond. So, I represent that broad support among parents and our expertise and enthusiasm, should you choose to tap into us as a group. So, I look forward to moving towards equity and closing the achievement gap. It matters a lot to us parents at Franklin, too, and that's what's motivating me. So, thank you, and as you look towards budget priorities, I hope you look towards nutrition and food program priorities, too. Good evening. Thanks.
Thank you. We had one speaker turn in as a request to speak after the item had started, so by our rules, that speaker will have one minute to speak. And I hope I don't get in trouble for only offering her one minute. Our next speaker is Maria Loyah.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Maria Loyah, and I'm here representing the parent group called Healthy Meals, Healthy Minds. And we're also here joining another parent group, Parents for Healthy Foods. And we're here to advocate that you prioritize investing in the food program. I want to thank you for the commitment that you all have made in closing the achievement gap and making that a priority. But we cannot leave, we can't leave nutrition out of that formula. And so, I'd like to ask you if you could please consider adding that as one of your budget priorities. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Maria. And that concludes our public speakers. Thank you, John. And that'll bring us to our consent calendar and entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Thank you, Ralph, and seconded by our friend Craig. And John, I think, is gonna recuse himself.
Yeah, I need to recuse myself from two purchase orders, 1-858-91 and 1-86128, which are reimbursements to me for food I bought for the board for Malibu Board Meetings.
Can we talk about this for a second? Because if we recuse ourselves at that level, we're really gonna make ourselves crazy.
It's a check written to me. I was advised to recuse myself.
You were advised?
I asked our CBO.
Well, here's what we're gonna say. The member has decided to recuse himself, and that's what we're going to accept.
That's fine. But then, go ahead.
Can I, can I finish Craig's thought? Can we ask our lawyer then whether we have to do this in the future? Because this is not, there's no, no money being made here. This is a reimbursement for a school district.
Right. It's an appropriate question to have addressed in another moment, but here, a member is asked to have two items pulled so that he can recuse himself.
He asked, and I just said for safety reasons, I think maybe he should. We will get an opinion on it, though.
Thank you very much. Are there other items to pull?
Yes. Yeah, I would also err on the side of caution for the, what is it, 8C10 on the extension of California Construction Management. They made a donation back in 2015. I recused myself on that vote. They didn't make a donation since then, but I think, just to err on the side of caution, I'd like to do what John is doing and recuse myself on that item as well.
All right. Thank you. So, the chair recognizes two members having asked to pull three different items from consent. Sarah, we've pulled those, and we're gonna take those in succession after the vote here on the consent.
Was it 8C10?
CCM.
Right, there were two purchase orders.
Yeah, within the one item. So, those two items, thank you. So, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the consent items without those two, we'll take a roll call here.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I'm a yes also, so that's six yeses and one abstention. And now, that'll bring us to the two items. Let's take, Sarah, which one do you want us to take first? You have B1. So, we need a motion to approve item B1 from the consent. Thank you, Craig, seconded by Lori. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, and the, of course, is it, is it an abstention, Maria?
It's a purchase order. Member Keen has recused himself. So, it appears as if it's a six in favor, and then John has recused himself.
Thank you. And then, the last item is the item that Oscar has pulled. Is there a motion to approve that item? Thank you, Ralph, seconded by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And any opposition? And Oscar's recused himself there. Is that good, Sarah? Great. No, thank you. And we'll make sure Melody and Dr. Drotty are, we'll have that conversation at another time as to the appropriateness so that all of us can get clear on the appropriate moments to recuse oneself. That'll now bring us to our discussion items, which there are none this evening, so major action items. And as recommended by Craig, we did take a vote, we amended our agenda item, and again, and so, we're gonna take ourselves to 11E first. Is that correct, John?
I thought it was H. H.
Forgive me, 11H. So, we're gonna go to 11H first. And let's have that item introduced by Dr. Drotty, and then we'll go directly to hearing the public comments. I don't know which staff member was, it's Dr. Kelly, I think. Okay, forgive me. I just always go to the superintendent's.
Oh, no, you got it.
But Dr. Kelly is on it over there. Thank you.
So, this is, we're asking the board to adopt a resolution that shall release and reassign a certificated administrator. This is part of additional stat-certificated staffing items. It is necessary in order to provide sufficient notice by March 15th to the employee.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Vice President Keen, we have speakers.
We have seven speakers on this item. So, the Board of Education will now hear comments from the public regarding the specific agenda item. As per the Brown Act, board members may not...
As per the Brown Act, board members may not engage in discussion of issues raised during public comments except to ask clarifying questions, make a brief announcement, make a brief report on his or her own activities, or refer the matter to staff. Speakers who have submitted a public speaking card prior to the beginning of this item will have three minutes to speak. We have seven speakers on this item right now. Speakers who submit a public speaking card after this item begins shall be limited to one minute. Speakers and members of the audience are asked to refrain from expressions of support or disagreement that would intimidate other speakers or disrupt the meeting. Our first three speakers are Nancy Gutierrez, Juanita Davis, and Claudia Tamayo. Each will have three minutes.
Ms. Gutierrez, before you speak, Dr. Drati, I have a clarifying, I have a point of information, actually, to ask. The resolution before us this evening adheres to the privacy laws required in our state, and so there is no named employee here. And I'm cautious in wondering what the rule is to any kind of engagement or hearing from public, the public, when we ourselves here on the dais are not privy to who this employee is? What is the standard here?
So, it may be helpful, and we probably could do that if we looked at the, all of the resolutions related to the certificated staffing, and then take the public comment as just information that may be available to the public, not by the district means.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Is that, thank you for allowing me to interrupt and get that clarification. Thank you.
Great, so, Ms. Gutierrez?
Good evening. My name is Nancy Gutierrez, and for almost 20 years, I have had the honor of serving the families in this, of this district as a bilingual community liaison. I say the honor of serving them because I deeply believe that engaging and supporting parents, particularly those who have been historically underserved, is sacred work that requires a special empathy, knowledge, understanding, and respect for the journey and life experience of our parents. And what I have learned working with underserved parents is that they connect with individuals they trust and develop a relationship with, and that individual becomes their bridge to school and the school system. They do not come to school and participate just because they are invited, whether they had bad experience with the school themselves, or come for countries where parents stay quiet and leave schooling to school. Underserved parents require nurturing and rely on people they trust and with whom they have relationship to learn to fulfill their role as a parent in American schools. For years, Aida Diaz has had, had done that relationship-building with families in the community, and she is deeply loved and trusted by parents who will be less visible and less participatory if it wasn't for Aida's work with them. These parents come to meetings and participate in worship because Aida is there and they know it will be the worth their life, their life. When they have problems, they seek her out to help them find resources, all because they trust her and have a deeper relationship with her. Because of the years Aida has invested in family, she is the glue that links underrepresented parents, liaisons, school and administrators together, from ELAC, African-American parents, Smart School participant, immersion parents, with all know Aida, trust her, and value the understanding job she does every day for them and their children. One of the basic guidelines that the State Department of Education, Joyce Epstein, and other experts consistently say about our school district parent engagement efforts is to listen to what the parents tell you they want and need. And our parents, many of whom have been historically disenfranchised, are telling us that by their attendance in meeting and training, their reliance on Aida for assistance with questions and problems under present here tonight, that they value and count on Aida leading engagement service for them. I strongly encourage you to listen to the parents and do as the parents' education expressly. Honor what the parents are telling you that they want and need. They want and need Aida as the coordinator of parent engagement. Removing this special person from this keep will set the work connecting with parent back years of someone new tries and establish working trust for relationship within the minority parent communities.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Juanita Davis.
Hello, my name is Juanita Davis. I was PTA president. I'm a mother of twin boys at John Adams Middle School. They went through the immersion program, they are in the immersion program. I would like to speak as a parent of the immersion program about the work of Aida Diaz, the work that she has done for us. Thanks to Aida, our program, there is now a group that is combined between the district and the parents that meet, and they work together to make the program more cohesive. We have a communication group, we have a fundraising group, and she is helping us make the program cohesive from kinder to 12th grade. She has listened to our needs, and we are very grateful for the work that she has been doing. Recently, I joined the team as a bilingual community liaison, so I'm working for the district now in Malibu. And I am very proud to work for the underserved people in that community. I have had now the pleasure to work with Aida from a different perspective, from a different light, and she has been a key position, a key person for me as a learning employee. She knows the ins and outs of my position. She has helped me to understand what is it that I need to do and how to better help the community. I don't know what I would have done without her because there was nobody there to guide me for that position. Nobody else knew how to do it, but she showed me how to do it, and she has been a wonderful guide, and I am so glad that she was there because now I can serve the community even better. She is well-liked in the community. She is trusted by all of us. She works hard with the DILAC parents. She's compassionate, kind, and very knowledgeable, and I would like her to continue supporting us in the family engagement position. And I also want to say that the ballroom dancing is absolutely wonderful. When my children dance, I was in tears because they were crying, they were dancing "The Way You Look Tonight," and they looked just amazing. So, it's a wonderful program. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Juanita. Our next speaker is Claudia Tamayo. After Ms. Tamayo, we have Laura Hernandez and Anna Garcia.
¿Podría tener un traductor, por favor? Buenas tardes, respetables miembros de la mesa directiva.
Do you mind if I do kind of simultaneously, in that case, we can go?
Ah, okay. Buenas tardes, respetables miembros de la mesa directiva y superintendente.
Good evening, everybody, respectful board members.
Good evening to the respectful board members and everyone here tonight.
Mi nombre es Claudia Tamayo y soy representante de los padres de Grand School.
My name is Claudia Tamayo, and I'm the representative for parents of Grand Elementary School.
Esta es una petición para que Aida Diaz pueda continuar desempeñando su cargo como coordinadora de padres engagement. En nuestro distrito, ella conoce nuestra comunidad. La historia de nuestras familias es la cara visible de ELAC, DILAC, y El Cap.
This is a petition for Aida Diaz would be allowed to continue in her position as coordinator of parent engagement in our district. She knows our community, the history of our families, is the visible face of DILAC, ELAC, El Cap.
Además, apoya a todos los padres que tienen niños con necesidades especiales.
She also supports all the parents that who has children with special needs.
Siempre nos está motivando a que sigamos aprendiendo e involucrándonos en el aprendizaje y desarrollo de nuestros hijos, tales como School Smart, Book Club, etc.
She's always, sorry, estoy perdida. Okay. She always, thank you, she always is motivating us to continue learning and involving, and the learning and development of our children, such as School Smart, Book Club, ELAC.
Queremos recalcar que ella es una pieza importante para unificar a las familias de todas las escuelas, necesidades, y cultura dentro de nuestra comunidad.
She, we would like to emphasize that she is an especial, an important piece to unify the families of all the schools, needs, and culture then inside our community.
Antes de tomar una decisión, les pedimos que tomen en consideración esta petición pensando en nuestras familias.
Before you make a decision, we ask you to take in consideration this petition thinking in our families.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Laura Hernandez.
Buenas tardes, estimada mesa directiva. Mi nombre es Laura. Yo tengo hijos en Roseville y en John Adams.
Good evening. Her name is Laura. Good evening, everybody in the board. Her name is Laura. She has children in John Adams and in Roseville.
Estoy aquí para apoyar a Aida, que es nuestro lazo con el distrito y la conexión con la comunitarias.
We are here to support Aida. She is the link between the district and our connection with the bilingual community liaisons.
Aida ha ayudado a incrementar el nivel de involucramiento a los padres, y como resultado, hubo en algunas escuelas una mayor rendimiento académico para los inglés learners.
Aida has helped to increase the level of involvement within the parents, and as a result, there has been more academic, rendimiento, rendimiento académico? Academic results, better results.
La experiencia que tiene Aida con nuestras familias nos cubre todas nuestras necesidades, y realmente no pensamos que ocupamos otra persona. Aida nos cubre nuestras necesidades y la queremos a ella por familia que sentimos con ella.
So, they feel that we don't need anybody else. They feel that Aida is covering the necessities of the community, and they want her here.
Gracias por su atención y ojalá y nos escuchen.
Thank you for your attention, and we hope that you listen to us.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Our next speaker is Anna Garcia, followed by Perola Garcia and Maria De Luna.
¿Usted quiere hablar en inglés? No, español, por favor. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Anna Garcia.
Good evening. My name is Anna Garcia.
Tengo tres niños, uno en Muir, uno en John Adams, y en Will Rogers.
She has three kids, one in Muir, one in John Adams, and one in Rogers.
Me gustaría que tomaran en cuenta, perdón, la posición de la señora Aida. Yo tengo poco tiempo en el distrito y Aida nos ha apoyado inmensamente.
I would like for you to consider keeping Aida in her position. I have a very short time in the district, and she has helped us immensely.
Nuestra voz se escucha por medio de ella en las juntas de DILAC, El Cap, y ELAC.
Our voice is listened by her in the DILAC, the El Cap, and the ELAC meetings.
Ahorita ella está trabajando en un programa en Rogers que se llama Cuentos Familiares, es de cómo apoyar a nuestros hijos en la lectura y en el estudio académico.
Sorry. Right now, she's working with us in Rogers in a program called, ¿cómo se llama?
Cuentos Familiares.
Family Stories.
Nos enseña cómo ser parte del estudio de nuestros hijos, y gracias a eso nosotros podemos apoyar más a nuestros hijos, influenciar más como padre en sus estudios de ellos.
So, she is teaching us how to get involved with our children's education, and we now are being able to help our children more in their learning.
Ella siempre está disponible cuando tenemos una pregunta, una confusión, algo, ella siempre nos explica, nos apoya, y si entendemos algo mal, ella siempre nos lo explica y nos dice de la forma que debe de ser, y me gustaría que volveran a reconsiderar su, ese cambio que quieren hacer con ella.
She's always answered our questions. She explains things to us when we don't understand them, and if we make a mistake, she will correct us and guide us in the right way. And that's why we would like if you could reconsider that decision and keep her in her job.
Gracias, usted.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garcia.
Estimada mesa directiva.
Dear Board of Education.
Por favor, tomen en cuenta que Aida lleva, que lleva tiempo crear un vínculo de confianza entre los padres y la administración del distrito escolar.
Please take in consideration that it takes time to create a liaison and a trust between the parents and the administration of the school district.
Nosotros hemos logrado crear ese vínculo de confianza con Aida Diaz a lo largo de estos años. Si traen a una nueva persona, para nosotros significaría empezar desde cero.
We have achieved that type of trust with Aida Diaz during all these years. If you bring a new person for us, it's going to be like a start from ground zero.
Tome nuestra petición en serio, por favor. Aida es importante para nuestras familias y para nuestra comunidad.
Please take in consideration this petition seriously. Aida is important for our families and for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garcia. And our last speaker on this topic is Maria De Luna.
Hi, good evening. I'm here because I want to know why we weren't informed of this change. I think that if you guys have a coordinator that is involved with parents, that being no group, and I just want to know that she is a big part of the community. Oh, sorry. This is very personal to me. Because not only is she involved as a parent, but she understands this. I have a son who is special needs, and I attended the Joy Foundation, the workshops, and she's really, she really gets involved. And I just want to know why we weren't informed, and I hope that, seeing all of us here, you guys will reconsider that decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that is the end of public comment for this agenda item.
Thank you, John. So, we are on item 11H, which is Resolution 17-30. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Moved by Craig. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Lori. Thank you. Is there any discussion of the motion? So, that'll bring us to a roll call vote. Mr. Metcalf?
Yes.
Maria Leon Vasquez?
No.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. Foster.
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre.
Abstain.
Mr. King.
Yes.
I am a yes. So that is, uh, one no, one abstention and five yeses the resolution carries. Uh, that'll now bring us to Resolution 11A, excuse me, not Resolution A, major action item 11A, Resolution 17 dash 23. And is there a motion to approve the resolution recognizing Women's History, History Month? Moved by Lori. Is there a second? Seconded by Maria Leon Vasquez, as it does, thank you. And of course, we're going to ask Member King to please read the resolves.
Okay. Therefore be it resolved that the Santa Monica, Malibu Unified School District Board of Education does hereby adopt this resolution to encourage the celebration of Women's History Month, the instruction to our students on the achievements, are we changing, hold on, uh, the instruction to our students on the achievements and contributions of women fostering in our students a greater understanding of the roles women have played throughout the history of our nation and helping all students understand their responsibilities in protecting and preserving gender equality.
Lori.
Can I just clarify? I, I did speak to Richard earlier and I, we should have said something publicly. I think, um, I would like to propose that we call it, say, Women's History slash Hurstry, which will cover people who are comfortable with whatever version, um, and, I mean, I can detail my conversation with Richard and where I'm coming from as a woman who just went to a, uh, gathering with hundreds of women this morning where they talked about Women's History Month without any discomfort. In fact, that's how they identify and some people identify, I mean, we could have a whole discussion, which we don't need to do tonight and it would be of value too, but, um, I think better to just have a both end approach, which is, I think, what Richard and I came to. So I would like to amend it so that it reads that way. And if friendly.
When Lori, when Lori asked me, I said, it's interesting that, you know, I'm the one who suggested Hurstry and Lori's suggesting that it be History Hurstry. I said, "Both and" is a wonderful place to be at, so to include everybody's perspectives.
So just to be clear, anywhere Hurstry appears in the resolution, it will be replaced with History slash Hurstry.
Well, I would argue for Hurstry first, but, um, Lori has said History, so I'm not opposed. I'm teasing. I'm trying to bring some, some smiles to the dais. Thank you for smiling, those of you who did.
I, I just want to say one thing because I, I had the same reaction and I, I do what I do is I ask friends of mine who are very involved in feminist causes and, and, and women's rights and their, their reaction was, "Yeah, it's a little silly, but it doesn't hurt to take a step back and look at language." And while history is not about the root word H-I-S, history does, it's not, it's about histori, it's Greek, it's about knowledge through inquiry, but, um, it doesn't hurt us to stop and think about how we say what we say and how it affects people. So I, I think is, you know, it, it doesn't hurt us to take this step the way we're doing.
And we'll.
Because that's what was stated this morning, so it is, to make it, in other words, there should never be a separation, that, that, when you talk about history, it includes everybody without saying it's a woman history, it's black history, it's brown history, it's all history.
And so this will require a roll call vote. Mr. Metzer.
This is as amended?
As amended, yes. I'm, we're going to assume that that was a typo and not needing a vote on amendment.
Okay, yes.
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 I mean, yes, also for the resolution.
It's unanimous, Sarah, thank you so much. That'll bring us now to action item, um, to adopt a Resolution 1724 National Middle Level Education Month, John.
Therefore be it resolved that the month of March 2018 be declared National Middle Level Education Month and that the public be afforded opportunities to attend middle level school events and participate in programs that focus on the nature of young adolescents and celebrate the ways in which our nation's schools respond to their needs and to the needs of the nation.
Thank you, John. It's our motion to approve, moved by Maria, thank you, seconded by Craig. This will require a roll call vote also. Ralph?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes, with a little caveat that I hope we can do more than just do this resolution for middle school. I think we have to really do more action than just the resolution.
Here, here. Lori?
Yes.
Whoops, yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Oscar?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Sarah, I'm also a yes. That brings us to 11C, which is the Resolution 1725 and recognition, recognizing Cesar Chavez Day. John?
Therefore be it resolved that the Santa Monica, Malibu Unified School District Board of Education does hereby adopt this resolution to honor a man who devoted his life to improving the working conditions, safety and dignity of so many by recognizing March 31, 2017 as the anniversary of the birth of Cesar Chavez. The Board calls upon all schools and justice-minded people of the community to honor the legacy of Cesar Chavez as a symbol of hope and justice to all persons.
Moved by Maria, seconded by Oscar. Ralph?
Yes.
Maria?
I'm a yes, but you know, one of the other things, because he was a co-founder of the United Farm Workers and since it's history, Women's History Month, um, I think we should give Dolores Huerta the same, um, recognition and I would like to see if the district would honor April 10th, her birthday as, uh, also in honor of Dolores Huerta.
Thank you. We'll bring that to our next.
Thank you.
Uh, April 10th is Dolores Huerta's.
April 10th is Dolores Huerta's birthday.
So we will bring that to agenda planning. Thank you, Maria. Lori.
Thank you.
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Oscar?
Yes, I just, I want to also say that we should send, um, something to our, our faculty. I mean, I don't know if we can prepare something that we might from Central Office, say, there might be some resources, uh, you know, so that some, that faculty might have something that they can utilize in the classroom to teach a little bit about the history, yeah.
Thank you, Oscar. And Dr. Mora has said that she can do that. Thank you very much. John?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, Sarah, that's a unanimous approval. That brings us to item number 11D, which is the adopt, adoption of Resolution Number 1726 in support of common sense gun laws. We have one public speaker. I'm going to ask Ralph to introduce the, um, the resolution. John will then read the resolves, then we'll go to, um, have, um, then we'll go to have our one speaker.
Thank you. Um, this resolution is a result of a series of violent attacks over many years and most recently in, in Parkland, Florida. To the students of Parkland, you are being taken seriously. We hear you and we support you. Your voices bring to life the horror of the mass murder that occurred at your skull, school and the heartbreak it has caused. You're saying never again means starting with ridding our society of weapons capable of mass murder. Would you not need them to have a free and democratic society? Far from it. Having them in our midst forces us to consider placing restrictions on our freedoms and forces us to have fear for our safety. We choose to work for a future that is open, welcoming, friendly, hopeful and sharing, the future that Parkland students and students everywhere dream of. Our teachers and students deserve to be in schools where the threat is kept away. It's time to take back the day as well as the night, to keep doors and windows open and not to consider closing them up. Building thicker walls, higher fences, smaller windows, having armed guards with only legitimized having military-style assault weapons in our civil society. So let's support the assault weapons ban measures in both, both the House and the Senate. Let's support the companies that are changing policies that have encouraged the proliferation of assault weapons and let's support local efforts to help children cope with whatever issues they feel are important to them through counseling intervention and parent engagement. I ask you to please join me in approving the resolution that's before us.
Thank you, Ralph. And I'm going to ask a member, Foster, to read the resolves. And I want to explain, um, I think folks who are watching or who are in the room that this was recommended, um, by multiple members of board, but, um, Craig asked for this in board comments at the close of our last meeting and what we did, thank you to Sarah particularly and to Dr. Drati and his team, all members of this board were very interested in wanting to participate in the crafting of this resolution. And so not to, um, break any Brown Act rules, um, we've funneled everything through Sarah and Dr. Drati's office and so, um, as folks will tell or can tell, um, this is a very important issue for all the members of the board. Craig, are you, I'm, I didn't alert Craig that I would ask him to do this, but as if you don't have it there, John is.
My computer caught a brain cramp, so. It logged me out and I don't know my password, um, apparently. Yeah, it does. Um, so I'm reading the be it resolved. So therefore be it resolved that the Santa Monica, Malibu Unified School District Board of Education stands with the students, parents and educators in all 50 states, reaffirms and demands that all students have the right to attend schools that are safe from the threat of gun violence and be it further resolved that the Santa Monica, Malibu Unified School District Board of Education reaffirms its commitment to ongoing review and improvement of school safety plans and emergency preparedness and to continue to work with our partners at the Santa Monica Police Department and the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department and elsewhere to address the threats of gun violence and be it further resolved that we will communicate to our duly elected state and federal legislatures our position that removal of semi-automatic weapons from our civil society is a necessary, crucial and urgent step in ensuring the safety of our students and staff and be it further resolved that we believe it is incumbent upon our duly elected state and federal legislatures, uh, legislators to pass legislation to protect our schoolchildren and all members of our community by outlawing the manufacture, sale, use or storage of semi-automatic weapons, high-capacity ammunition magazines and other lethally enhancing, lethality and lethally enhancing devices. Pass legislation that at a minimum requires background checks for all purchases of guns and ammunition, raises the age to purchase such to 21, denies those with violence, uh, protection orders to purchase such, eliminates access to firearms for individuals who through mental health diagnoses couldn't be considered a danger to themselves and others, requires separate storage for such with separate locks, outlaw straw purchases, limits the number of guns and rounds of ammunition that an individual can purchase annually, funds the development of smart gun technology and funds buyback programs for all guns and ammunition, creates a waiting period before all gun purchases, eliminates loopholes in avenues to gun purchases, two more bullet points, adequately, uh, fund our schools to hire additional psychologists, mental health coordinators, nurses, counselors, social workers to support student mental health and well-being, to ensure students are receiving the support that they need to be able to engage in their education and adequately fund our schools to expand existing trainings, including threat assessment and interventions for at-risk students and continued bullying prevention programs.
Thank you very much, Craig. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Oh, I know, I want to get the motion. Yeah, that's, I, I know we have to. Moved by Maria, is there a second? Seconded by Ralph, thank you very much. I'm just taking the first hand that went up that I could see, I'm peripheral, uh, so it's now been moved and seconded. We'll hear from our one speaker and then, um, Oscar, I have you on the speakers list first.
Board of Education will now hear comments from the public regarding this specific agenda item. As per the Brown Act, board members may not engage in discussion of issues raised during public comments except to ask clarifying questions, make a brief announcement, make a brief report on his or her own activities or a further matter to staff. We have one speaker who has submitted a card. He will be given three minutes. Anybody respe, submitting a card after this item, uh, has begun will be limited to one minute. Speakers and members of the audience are asked to refrain from expressions of support or disagreement that would intimidate other speakers or disrupt the meeting. Our speaker on this topic is Jerry Rubin. Jerry? Khag Samay, happy forum and, uh.
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Thank you very, very much. Board Chair, Board Member, Superintendent Drati. I think it's an inspiring resolution. I don't think one word should be changed. Very thoughtful. If only all of our leaders would follow what's written there, we'd be a little closer to getting the job done. I wanted to bring up something that even though it's not going to be included in the resolution, that I do, hope it's, uh, agendized, hopefully at your next meeting or whenever. I know, uh, Board Member Delatori knows about this because the issues concerning the realistic-looking toy guns, they're a safety threat still. The police know that, responsible parents know that, educators know that. Our group has been giving out merit awards for years now and before that we gave out over 5,000 teddy bears for kids that turned in their toy guns. We had, uh, a wonderful event many years ago and 20 members of the Girl Scouts of Santa Monica came downtown to Los Angeles and we had accumulated over a thousand toy guns and a trucking company donated their shipping, uh, fee free and we shipped after a thousand toy guns were put into an automobile crushing machine and made into a six-foot square solid block of plastic crushed toy guns. We shipped them back to the president of the Toy Manufacturers of America on Valentine's Day, ironically enough, in New York City. And we done a lot of other events and I want to thank Board Member Delatori for joining us at a press conference we had a few years ago with actress and, uh, Mama's and Papa's founding member, Michelle Phillips, and psychologist Carol Lieberman. To speak of the concerns that educators need to have and parents need to have about these toy guns, they desensitize the children. You know, violence and playing with toy guns is not a game and they can lead to the real thing. So as Gandhi said, if we want to have peace on our planet, we have to begin with the children. And so I urge you to take up this concern and start with the earliest age possible. Thank you very, very much for the good work you're doing. It's really deserves a lot of credit.
Thanks, Jerry. We have one more speaker on this topic. My apologies for not seeing it. Judson, Judson Jaeger?
Yeah.
Judson, you'll have three minutes.
All right. All right. Good evening. Okay. So, um, yeah, my comments are regarding school safety, school security, the gun resolutions, it's all kind of related. Um, so I'll just begin. As I dropped my seven-year-old daughter off at John, John Muir Elementary School this morning, I couldn't help but notice, like every other day, that there would be nothing and nobody to protect my daughter from a, from a potential shooter at school today. Not only is there no armed security at her school, there is no security at all. There's barely even a grown man on campus aside from maybe a janitor, yet right up the street, City Hall is protected by armed security, like every other government facility aside from public schools. Why? What is a legitimate explanation for this contrast in security efforts? For those of you who are against protecting our children with armed security of any type, I ask you, do you feel that other government facilities ought not be protected by guns? Do you believe that your bank ought not protect your money with the, with guns because it may make your money less safe? Should our local, state and federal representatives not be protected by guns? How bad are our community at large? Do we not need an armed police force? Do you feel that our airports are made less safe by the presence of armed security? Maybe you feel, well, I don't hear any demands that any place or facility in our community not be protected by armed security except for our public schools where our most vulnerable citizens spend most of their days. Our local Whole Foods has security with nine millimeters and 45 caliber pistols. They're protect, they're protecting their organic apples and the disgusting vegan pizza as we speak. If good guys and gals with guns are danger themselves, is it not part of the school district's emergency protocol to call the police, i.e. good guys and gals with guns in the event of a shooter? The only difference between having armed security already in place versus calling the police is that the police arrive after the slaughter. My fear that until states and local school districts are held financially liable for any murder of a student that occurs on a public school property, only then will we see our schools secured like City Hall. Over 98% of mass shootings occur in gun-free zones by design, meaning the shooters choose these areas specifically because they are gun-free. Why? Why are we subjecting our children to ideal conditions for crazed shooters? If our children don't deserve armed protection, nobody in our community does, including the members of this board. Stop pushing feckless gun control as if aspiring mass murderers care about your laws. And start taking affirmative action to secure the lives of our children. Protect our children first.
Thank you very much.
I'm almost done. I'm almost done. I'm almost done. I got like one minute. I rea... This is my first time doing this. Give me, you know, I'm almost done.
Please finish.
Instead of just petitioning state and federal legislators to fund more psychologists, mental health coordinators, nurses, counselors, and social workers, how about petitioning them to fund armed security personnel also? How about petitioning our state legislators to loosen our state's unobtainable requirements for concealed carry permits so that teachers and school staff members can choose to conceal carry? Or how about demanding that our state legislators shift their priorities from protecting the lives, I mean, to protecting the lives of schoolchildren instead of funding free college tuition and legal aid for legal aliens?
Mr. Jaeger, I know you said you're almost done.
I'm almost done. I'm gonna finish.
Sir, I'm so sorry.
I don't do this ever. I...
Sir, I appreciate that.
Listen, I'm a father. I'm gonna finish. My daughter goes to one of your schools, and I'm gonna finish this page.
Sir, you're...
I understand there's going to be an increased effort to identify at-risk use. Great. But what happens when one slips through the cracks or if an aspiring shooter is not a student? What happens if an aspiring shooter obtains a so-called assault weapon illegally or they decide on using one of numerous other types of deadly weapons that are readily available? What is your plan to make our schools less desirable targets to these individuals? What plan will be in place to mitigate the carnage while an attack is active? Tell me, what will your psychologist be assessing during such an attack? If this board refuses to push for basic armed security measures, and if God forbid, we have a mass shooting in one of our schools and children are murdered, you will be morally accountable for leaving these children unprotected. You've had enough warnings and time to act. Cut the crap.
That brings us to the end of public comment on that item. We have a... I don't want to do your job. We have a motion.
Well, I haven't brought us back to order.
Oh, okay. Well, then I will wait. Are we back?
Thank you. So we're back from a brief recess. Thank you for that. And we have two speakers on our list. It's first Oscar and then Maria. Oscar and Craig.
Thank you very much for bringing forward this resolution. Thank you, Craig, for your suggestion, and thank you, Jerry, for your years of work advocating for peace in this community. I just, there was a fifth whereas where we talk about an incident that actually happened, started right across the street from my house, and it made me think about the other violence that has affected the Pico neighborhood in particular for many, many years. And I thought that we added another whereas. It brings that violence as well to the forefront because that violence is also important. It's impacted our students and our families. And it would just read, whereas since nineteen eighty-two. So what I'm suggesting is a sixth... So after whereas number five, we would bring this whereas. And it would read, whereas since nineteen eighty-two, more than sixty-two youth have been murdered in the Pico neighborhood, leaving a trail of trauma that continues to impact families' well-being. So essentially, it just, it also brings out the the violence that has impacted the community and the youth of this community in particular for that many, that long time.
Oscar, do you have that language?
Yeah, I have it.
Described on a piece of paper for Sarah, and you're making that as a motion?
Yes.
And is there a second to that? The chair is accepting his comment and the suggestion as a motion.
That's right. So if, wouldn't, isn't the maker of the original motion have to accept that as a family amendment?
Typically, that would be the case, but I think that the... Yes, I hear what you're saying. Well, the maker of the motion, I would have to ask Sarah, is Maria. The author of this, what I was going to is that the author of this resolution is multifold, which is not the case. I understand that. Maria, are you open to this? Is the first and second are open to this? As a friendly, otherwise it doesn't have to be. I mean, it... Okay. So I'm just gonna ask a question for a second. So the way that this would work is that, the way I understand the rules is that we could ask if there is a friendly amendment. We're hearing that it's not friendly. And so then Oscar is, from the dais, as is any member here, free to make changes to this document.
Well, you could make a substitute motion to include that.
Well, I'm not gonna... Yes. So I'm asking now, is there a second to what this would be? Is a substitute motion?
Can I hear that language again because I might want to add to the language and then find a way to tie it in?
Yeah, sure. So whereas since nineteen eighty-two, more than sixty-two youth have been murdered in the Pico neighborhood as a result of gun violence? We could even leave it right there.
I was just thinking of trying to tie it into, go to, like you said, since nineteen eighty-two, more than sixty-two of the youth have been murdered in the Pico neighborhood, and I don't, since we don't know, countless, due to gun violence.
Yeah.
Well, before you get to due to gun violence, I was gonna add, and countless youth across the country. Because I think that's what ties it into the whole, the bigger theme.
That's fine.
Because, so you get it specific as well as larger.
That's fine.
Lori, will you serve as a second to that language?
Yeah, if we add that so that it's... Because then I think it fits the sort of way it's...
I'm not considering this as a substitute motion. I'm considering this as an amendment to the document. That's how I'm reading this. Right? All those in favor of this amendment, will you say aye, please?
Aye.
Opposed? This is just adding what was just designed. So, all right, thank you. So that is, now we'll go back to the discussion of now the...
The entire thing.
Yes, the whole motion, the resolution. Thank you, Oscar. Maria and then Craig.
Yes. Well, thank you. Thank you for the makers of this. But, you know, for me, it's, 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 it's just a resolution. And so I think that if we want to do something, we have to be more proactive and actually take action, just, not just do a resolution. And one of the pieces that I do agree in terms of the further be it resolved, the specific point, bullet points that are made on the last, be it for the result, was that, second to the last, it said adequately fund our schools to hire additional psychologists, mental health coordinators, nurses, and on and on and on. And then to expand existing trainings, including threat assessment and interventions for at-risk youth. So some of the pieces we already have in place. But I think that, and maybe this is something that we give this as a mandate for, or one of the, I forget what you call it, to the Health and Safety DAC to look into this as maybe the committee on our behalf, to see what would it take? Because mental health has been a big issue in this community. And even when Kaiser came in and did an evaluation of this community, mental health was the number one issue. So, and if you look at the wellness report card and everything, it's always a big issue. When you look, and that's not a matter of arming. I'm not in favor of arming teachers or whatever, you know, that's ridiculous. But I think if we, if we're able to, at least within our own communities, be able to resolve a lot of the mental issues that leads to youth going to this point of shooting. You know, when you really look at every single person that's been involved, a lot of them had mental health issues. So I think that if there's any way that we can, I don't know as a community, as a school district, it's hard because for us to do it alone. But I'm not saying let's not do it alone. I think we can work with the city, with a college, and work it as a whole community to see what can we resolve, and especially when these issues come to us. Because by the time it comes to us, it comes to us as expulsions, and there's a lot of issues with our youth that I think we need to really resolve and figure out how we can be part of a system that's gonna hopefully ensure the nipping of the butt of these potential catastrophic actions than not, than just, you know, leave it alone and say we're gonna do it, but actually really look at it. You know, it's interesting that our last speaker mentioned about the shooting. I mean, I was there at the college, and I think, you know, Richard, you and I were there. And it's interesting because, again, it's the thing that we have armed guards. And I remember back in the seventies, I voted, I was a student there at the time, and I was against arming of our own, you know, of our own guards there. But because as a student, you know, that's what we were trying to do. You were not gonna support, you know, police on your campus. But in this situation, even with armed guards being at the campus, it did not avoid the killing that occurred on that campus. So the fact that we're saying we're gonna arm, and for me, I have a lot of issues arming, you know, even at the high school level, you know? Because we're not in that situation, even though we did have a massive shooting in the city. So I think those discussions have to be had, and it's not just our school district, but maybe it's something that we can propose, starting maybe with a Health and Safety DAC, whoever the liaisons are. Bring it, oh, okay, you and Ralph, bring it back and see what comes from that. And many of them live in the city at large, so maybe we can actually set up a broader, you know, broader organization so that we can, we can do more than just this resolution. I understand from Ralph that there's a couple of women that are Lori Crane and Suzanne Verge who work on, there's an organization I can't recall right off the top of my head. But they're gonna be making a present...
Mothers Against Gun Violence. Mothers Against Gun Violence.
No.
Suzanne's with the Brady, she's with the Brady Campaign.
Brady Campaign, there you go. And they're gonna make a presentation at the school site council next, at the PTA Council next week. So maybe there's a some, I wish you would have known we would have brought them here, and they could have actually spoken. So maybe there's something that we can be more proactive by maybe working with those organizations that already exist in our community to see how we can broaden our support.
I think your sentiments are shared by every member of this board. This has to be more than just words on a resolution. Thank you, Maria. Craig?
Yeah. I certainly agree with the sentiment that there's a lot we can, we are doing, a lot more we must do. In some ways, this is the most important topic we have because we can't do any of the rest of our work without this. But I want to speak to something that's come up with a number of people about this resolution over the last week or so that we've been talking about this. And that, it, this is so often viewed in a political context. And while I proudly own the politics of this, for me, this isn't about politics. I was writing something to my friends and community on the evening of the Parkland shootings. And as I worked my way down, my writing and the things that we as a district could do, I couldn't get to a conclusion that would protect our children. Because when we live in a world where military weapons are available broadly, widely, to pretty much anybody, there's just no way you can protect the students. There is no fence high enough. You know, you have the Delta Forests on every campus in the country. You can't do that, and you wouldn't do that. The single most powerful step we as a nation can take to protect our youth in their schools is to make sure that people can't buy assault weapons when they are what the resolution says. And so for me, I hope this goes up the representative chain of command to Sacramento, to Washington, that CSBA takes it over and takes this message as broad and as wide as it can. And the message is, we cannot protect our children in a world where military weapons are available broadly, widely, openly. Modification tools are available, all the things we know about. And to me, that's the core message here. And it's critically important that it resolves that way. Because like I said, while I totally own the politics of it, to me, this is not politics. This is how do we keep our children safe at every school in the country? Thanks.
Thank you, Craig. Ralph?
Yeah. And I agree. I mean, it's not, it's not about politics. It's about good sense, common sense. It shouldn't be about what one has the right to have or not to have. It's about making the choice, is to change our priorities for the safety of everybody. We're charged with our children, and so if, as we have, as we say sometimes, if decisions were made, if we always thought about decisions that were, as they're being made, about the impact of children, a lot of decisions would, in my opinion, would be very different. So this is a, you know, is a great place to start. Just changing the culture of our nation.
Thank you. So as we move...
John, yes? Just one note to possibly put in. We said in the first page, we defined civilian use. And at the top of the second page, there's one, the first bullet point, where it says pass legislation to protect our schoolchildren and other lethally enhancing devices. I think we add for civilian use at the end of that. I don't think we're implying that we're saying... If that's our intent, I would just suggest friendlies. The first bullet point, it says pass legislation to protect our schoolchildren and all members of our community by outlawing the manufacture, sale, use, or storage of semi-automatic weapons, high-capacity ammunition magazines, and other lethally enhancing devices. Earlier in the resolution, we say for civilian use. Because that's who we're talking about.
As opposed to military use? Or I don't know what the alternative is.
Because, it doesn't make a distinction. Earlier in this piece, we make a distinction between the two. So I'm just saying to be consistent with that.
Yeah.
All right. I don't see, okay. Where am I confusing you?
Well... Well, in that, I, to me, on the face of it, we're not talking about taking weapons away from the U.S. military. Clearly, we're not, but we, I'm looking for... I'm not, that's fine. If that's, I'm fine with the edit. I'm just confused, that's all. But I'm fine with that edit.
Lori?
I just, I think, I think there might be, if we were to work on this for a while, a more elegant way of doing this. But it does read as if you were talking about banning the manufacture, sale, use, blah, 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 for everybody. I mean, so I think that's a simple enough way to fix it. My, I just want to pile on to everyone else's comments. I certainly agree with everything everyone has said up here. And I guess Oscar's amendment kind of struck a chord with me because what I wanted to say was, clearly, I think we've done a good job of keeping this statement to one that's about guns and gun regulations and assault weapons in our schools, and that can affect our schools. But it's hard to ignore the fact that, as my son is constantly reminding me when we have this conversation or we see the news on all of this stuff, most, the overwhelming number of gun deaths don't even come from what happens in school shootings or from assault weapons. They happen in other places, some of which are like the ones that Oscar was referring to. So even though I think in a way it takes us outside of the scope of what we were doing, I think it makes a larger point that I feel like, I think we all agree. Maybe the whole world doesn't agree. Clearly, they don't. But I think up here we do, that guns, period, are an enormous issue in our society. I think that's part of what Craig is getting at. And I don't, you know, I too, Craig and I were talking earlier about this, don't see it as a political issue. It's, I'm not, it's hard to even say what it is. It's a common sense, common sense gun laws. Although I don't think we'll go as far as what I would consider to be common sense gun laws in our legislatures yet. But I think this is a really, as good a statement as we could come up with, given many people contributed and Sarah somehow put it together. So... So anyway, uh, and, and I just wanna say, I think it says it in the staff report, maybe? We do wanna figure out a way for this to be shared, Dr. Droudi to share this with certainly our local legislators, um, our city, two city councils, where, um, other places as appropriate, because I think we want to try to ask people to join us, and, and I know that there are plenty of people who do and are in their own way, other bodies that are-
I could let you know that Superintendent in the California branch out, please, we may borrow a link, may I borrow?
Maybe CSBA or something, I don't know, you know?
And, um, I have the email to Dr. Lawrence and Steve, and, uh-
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. So I do wanna go back to the suggestion that, um, was made by John, and I'm gonna assume that, that it was a second by Lori, and so for consistency, we're going to take a vote on that change. And so, um, would John and/or Lori please repeat that, because Sarah was away from the dais, and I'd like to make sure that Sarah has that for the record.
My computer just pulled a Craig and completely shut down all my attachments. I have no, I can't open a thing, and I know my password.
It's, it's at the, it's the, on the top of the second page, the first bullet, at the end of the bullet, after, and other lethally enhancing devices add for civilian use. Correct, John? I've been listening.
Thank you, Sarah. So we have that. Craig?
Can I just say, I don't normally get as deeply involved in the drafting of this, but I thought Sarah's job at, at, at creating this and pulling together so many different things and the amount of work that must go into it. I mean, I know what a great job you do and, and how hard you work in general. This was a sort of a case in point for me, a study, and I just wanna say thank you for this, recognize that, and, and everything you do.
Thank you. Okay, so this will be a roll call vote, and we'll begin with-
Richard, did you get a vote on that amendment?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't. Thank you, Lori, thank you. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that for civilian use amendment is passed unanimously. We now have a perfected resolution before us. And thank you to everybody who participated in, in working this, there's, um, very much, thank you. So, Mr. Metzer?
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Dilatory?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
I am also a yes, sir. That's a unanimous approval of Resolution seventeen twenty-six in support of common sense gun laws. And I will say that, as Dr. Droudi said in his report earlier, and many from the dais said in the deliberation over this resolution, that this is necessarily a political issue, or certainly not us taking sides, but we certainly tonight have spoken with one voice as a board, and we have a single voice tonight, and we appreciate that now going forward as many of you have asked for. Moving now to item, major action, item eleven E, which is the adoption of the Resolution seventeen twenty-seven regarding the release and non-relection of certificated temporary employees. We do not need to read the resolved here. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Moved by Oscar, seconded by Craig. This requires a roll call vote. Ralph?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Oscar?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I too am a yes. So Resolution seventeen twenty-seven, item eleven E passes unanimously. Sarah, thank you. That brings us to eleven F, which is the adoption of Resolution seventeen twenty-eight regarding the non-relection of certificated probationary employees. This also does not require our reading the resolved. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Moved by Craig.
District Attorney, just one.
I'll get a motion, I'll come right to you, and seconded by Ralph. Ralph, did I see a hand go up where there was it? Okay, we have a first and second. Dr. Kelly?
I, I think it was-
You want, go ahead.
Yeah. I was gonna read it after the, should I have read it first? Here we go. Following the publishing of this agenda, three employee numbers were removed from the list that appears on the resolution. I should've read this first. Eight zero five seven, two two eight nine, and one seven six six. The one employee number that will remain on the list is nine two nine three. Forgive me for stepping out of turn there, I think that will require for a new motion and second. Is there a motion to approve with the notification that eight zero five seven, two two eight nine, one seven six six should be struck from the resolution as printed and articulated before us, and that the only number that should remain is nine two nine three? Moved by Ralph, thank you, seconded by Craig. Thank you, all those in favor for a roll call vote, let's do that. Ralph?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Oscar?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. So Sarah, that is also a unanimous adoption. That brings us to our last major action item this evening, which is item eleven I, which is a CSBA delegate assembly election, and Sarah did, I believe, um, scan the one, the one item we got that was put into the Friday memo. We, um, one candidate reached out to us as a board. Are there any motions, or just?
Well, I at least would like to move that we recommend, I guess, the incumbents. I don't really know most of these people, so I don't, you know, I would move the, the incumbents on this list.
Okay, Sarah, we get to vote for a total of?
It was about eight, or I think it's eight, eight.
Eight for eight? And then there's the one write-in, is that the one, what is the, we received, and it was a write-in candidate, was the email that was in our packet, but, so, but Maria's recommendation and her motion is that we vote-
I have the thing in front of me. Yeah, no, there's nine in there.
Because I think one of those nine is the write-in candidate, correct?
Is it? I don't think so. I would think, you know, I don't have a list, I think it's a little bit narrow.
Over eight.
And there's only seven incumbents.
So why don't we start with the motion with the seven incumbent, so we get to vote for eight? And so it's seconded, so Maria moves, Craig seconds, that we cast seven votes for the incumbents.
Yeah, we can just leave it at that.
Or, or there may be another motion. So all those in favor of that, we're gonna take a roll call. So we have a motion on the floor, seconded, moved by Maria, seconded by Craig, for seven of our votes to be to, for the incumbents. Ralph?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Oscar?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. As a member of the board, woman of the board, I would suggest, I would like to suggest that we cast a vote for the write-in candidate, the candidate who reached out to us from Compton.
Fine.
Okay. Thank you, moved by Maria. Is there a second? Seconded by Craig, and so our eighth vote is what we'd be entitled to as a board. Ralph?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Oscar?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. As a member of the board, woman of the board, I would suggest, I would like to suggest that we cast a vote for the write-in candidate, the candidate who reached out to us from Compton.
Fine.
Okay. Thank you, moved by Maria. Is there a second? Seconded by Craig, and so our eighth vote is what we'd be entitled to as a board. Ralph?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Oscar?
John?
Yes.
And I too am a yes. Thank you for assisting us, assisting us with that, Sarah, thank you very much. We now come to, uh, board member items. We do have continuation of public speakers, but the, uh, board member items are first. Is there any report? Yes, Oscar?
Yeah, I just, um, I want, uh, well, we, we, we had a trip to Clovis, um, and so I wanna thank our superintendent for, uh, setting up this amazing trip. We visited, it's a CART, CART, is it CART High School, or is it just?
CART, yeah.
CART, yeah. And, and it was just amazing, I mean, in terms of like, what we used to know as vocational education is now CTE, is that the right term? Yeah. This, this, this school was probably the most innovative, the most inspiring, you know, school I've ever seen in my, in my, in all my years in public education, as a public education leader, and, um, I think it's an amazing program that we should definitely look into, um, and see what pieces we can bring into our school district, because they are doing an amazing job with these young people. I've never seen so many young people eager, they were just happy. Everyone we talked to, um, they were just really happy to be there. So I just wanna thank our superintendent and our staff for allowing us the opportunity to see, uh, and to be inspired by CART and what they're doing great over there. And then the last thing I wanna say is the Pico Youth and Family Center is hosting our ninth annual Arts for Hearts event this Friday from seven to eleven PM at the Robert Berman Gallery at Bergamot. It's a, a very nice event. If, if you have never been, you should plan to attend, it's a lot of fun, so it'll be this Friday from seven to eleven PM.
Thank you, Oscar. John, and then Maria, John's hands was up, I'm just going, thank you, John and then Maria.
I'm, I'm just gonna say, it would be wonderful, I don't know if we have this planned already, Dr. Droudi, um, or, or even Dr. Mora. It, will we have a time for the board members that could not go to Fresno to get a full report and a chance to really understand what happened to CART, is that coming up? Wonderful, thank you. Maria?
No, just, just, uh, they got me thinking, because after, you know, for those of, those that went to Santa Barbara, I also, after that, we got, and, um, I had the pleasure of Kerry, when he took us to all of the sites that we, that, um, we visited, Lincoln, and he showed me some extra spaces that was in the background, which is large enough, um, in terms of maker spaces, and as we, I guess for the board, I think we just started looking and really looking into the future, um, as we're, you know, we have the project Lead the Way, which is our engineering, but we don't connect anything with the manufacturing piece. You know, it's like they said, se me prendió el foquito, the light bulb turned on at that day, when I realized, oh, so this is what we're talking about manufacturing, not what many of us think, manufacturing, assembly lines. So for me, it's like, how do we project this, how do we get the information out to the public at large, to our families, that that's the future, that we really start, have to start thinking about 21st century jobs, and what does that look like? It wasn't like when last century, that we really have to look at that, and especially as we, we start looking at our schools and in, in, um, making changes, whatever, the development, we're, we're talking about maybe potentially a bond in 2018, but that we seriously look at it, so that we're connecting the educational pieces with the, with the, with the components, with the, um, with the infrastructure, with the, with the cla, with the buildings that we're gonna build, or the refurbishments that we're gonna do in those classrooms to meet those needs of our education, so.
Thank you, Maria. Lori, did you have your hand up?
I was just gonna echo O- Oscar's, um, point about the CART trip, because he and I were both on that, um, and I was gonna volunteer to privately share with John, since I can't do it with all of you, um, some of the details of it. It was amazing, and to Maria's point, we do have to figure out a way to be able to share the different kinds of things that certain people have been to, and our staff has been to more of and is more aware of, and be able to have a kind of, I don't know, robust discussion about it. Um, I don't know how we do that or when, but-
I have a suggestion, that's the way that Dr. Droudi did it, when we were at St. Monica's, that is a way of agendizing and then having a robust conversation, that is possible. So we do have more, um, thank you, Lori, we have, um, two additional public speakers.
We have two public speakers for general comments. Public comments is a time when members of the audience may address the Board of Education on topics not scheduled on the meeting's agenda. As per the Brown Act, board members may not engage in discussion of issues raised during public comment, except to ask clarifying questions, make a brief announcement, make a brief report on his or her own activities, or refer the matter to staff. We have two speakers now. The speakers will each be given three minutes. If anybody else turns in a chit, they will be given one minute. And finally, speakers and members of the audience are asked to refrain from expressions of support or disagreement that would intimidate other speakers or disrupt the meeting. Our two speakers are Jerry Rubin and Erica Leslie. You'll each have Jerry, are you still here, Jerry? I saw him get up and walk out, but I thought he'd come back. Well, then why don't we start with Erica, and we'll see if Jerry comes back. Are you cool with that, Erica? So our speaker now is Erica Leslie. Thanks, Erica, you have three minutes.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, how are you guys doing? I know you guys can't say anything, I just thought I'd ask, throw it out there. Crickets, okay. What I wanted to make a comment in is basically about the OWIS program for anti-bullying. We've had some incidents as far as that's concerned, and what are we doing with that? Some of these parents have been so frustrated, they felt that they needed the need to come to a school and lay hands on other people's kids. So what are we doing with that program? It's not being implemented, when are we gonna put the social justice implementation down to the elementary school level? So that some of these people don't feel so much frustration, because they're not being able to be heard, they don't see anything being done when they're reporting that their children are being bullied. Another thing that I wanted to speak about also is that when there's a flu epidemic, when we have the norovirus, and a lot of children are absent from school, then we get sent out these letters, when is it and how is it that you guys can suppress the letters that are being sent out to parents? Because we're already stressed out enough with our child being ill, having the flu, the, the nation has been sick with the flu, and it's just going around back and forth, a lot of kids are getting sick, and you know that this whole classroom's out, or half the classroom out, when can you guys suppress those letters? And one other thing, um, as far as the diversity component, and us having our community liaisons, they need to bring back the diversity of being able to celebrate Black History Month without our parents having to implement that component of it. It has to be something installed in the system, because we all have busy lives, we all have things that we're doing, and sometimes things fall off. You know, with us juggling so many other different things, your child's sick, um, you name it, whatever comes up, it needs to be something implemented within the school system so that the parents don't feel like they've been just dismissed. Last thing, my absolute last thing. So, we got a new superintendent, we have the norovirus, we're supposed to have a celebration for that superintendent. What happened? We were gonna revisit that. He's here, he came here before he was even hired, fully, his start date, laying on the ground, running. Where's the celebration at, people? I mean, come on, when we gonna do that? I'm finished, that's it.
Erica, I'm sorry, I have a ques, actually, two questions.
Yes.
One is, I didn't really understand the suppressing letters on the norovirus.
No, 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 suppressing letters being sent out to parents, when you know that there's a high volume of children that are being sick, like when the norovirus was running through the school district?
Yeah.
That's what I'm referring to. And so now, now we have the flu that's nationwide, people dying from the flu, and a lot of kids have been sick with the flu. Now we, we have these letters, these same letters that are being sent out, like when the norovirus. So when is it that we can suppress these letters, knowing that people that are already gonna be sick, and there's a high number of kids being sick?
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Erica. So Jerry has not come back, and so as we are about to adjourn this meeting at seven forty-five, I want to say that we all and staff are going to note this and be happy, because we had a long haul at our last meeting, and I just wanted to alert the board that we have two very substantive meetings in the month of March, so the March fifteenth, and then our special on the twentieth will, um, require a lot from all of us, and, uh, John and, on behalf of John and I, we are hoping that we can be, um, on the ready. As Erica said, you, Dr. Droudi, hit the ground running, we all need to be ready to hit the ground running for March fifteenth and March twentieth, because they are exceptionally